Start with case TC Quadruple 01, Simplifying Codes for Affordable Development. I'm going to turn it first to staff for any comments.
Yes, Grace Smith with the Planning Department. The staff does not have a formal presentation. You know, you have our staff report. And I do have a colleague here with me, the other Assistant Director for the Department, Beau Dubrinsky. He's here to help field some of the technical questions you may have. The impacts of this particular amendment, if approved, would primarily impact the work that his group does in the Planning Department as far as justice by right and development by right. So he's here on standby to help us walk through any issues or questions you may have. And I'm here as well. And I'll let you open it up and proceed as you feel fit.
Thank you. So I made this same statement when this came to us in September, and I want to reiterate it now. This is a privately initiated text amendment, which means this proposal was not written by planning staff. Planning staff has certainly been involved in the process as they ought to be to make sure they understand what the proposal is and what the potential impacts of that proposal is. However, this application is, this proposal is owned by the applicants, not by planning staff. So I just wanted to make that clear out of the gate. There's also, I've seen commentary about the timeline of this proposal. And the timeline, as it is with most things, was dictated by the Joint City-County Planning Committee. They reviewed this case twice and made clear that they wanted it to move forward after the second meeting. So just wanted to make those two things clear before getting into this proposal. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing. And we will begin with the applicant presentation, if they have one. They'll have 10 minutes to provide their presentation.
Hi, thank you. My name is Dave Olverson. I am the project manager with the applicant team. I am a graduate of UNC's Planning School and have been working on this project. I'm actually, you know, having learned a great deal from UNC's Planning School. I'm actually very honored to be working on this project. I really believe in it. I think it's pretty powerful. So I also wanted to thank, as Commissioner Amendolia mentioned, planning staff. They've worked really, really hard with us on this. And we've had a lot of back and forth. And their comments have certainly, in our opinion, made this proposal better. We wanted to thank the Planning Commission as well and especially the folks on the committee that was put together. It has, they came back with some great comments as well. Again, we think that, you know, we feel that those have made this proposal a lot better. So we're excited to bring this forward with you today. I'm going to step aside and let a couple of other folks speak. First, Jim Bellinger with Habitat. Wanted to invite him up.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. Habitat for Humanity of Durham is supportive of this proposal. We are probably the only affordable home ownership entity building significant homes in the community. And we're facing headwinds. Gentrification, inflation, rising costs of land, the number of people moving in. They're all big issues that this commission and we can't really address. But these proposed amendments help. These are the things that'll help us build homes and solve problems for us. And so that's why we are supportive of this. So thank you.
Next, I want to invite Tiffany Elder up to speak, who is a small practitioner developer here in Durham.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Tiffany Elder. I live here in Durham. I'm here to ask for your support in moving this text amendment moving forward. I am a Realtor and licensed general contractor here in Durham. I also serve as co-chair of the Collective, which is a consortium of Black real estate professionals here in our city, developers, owners, et cetera, here in Durham. And we're citizens who touch real estate on a daily basis and who want to continue to help build the city and house its citizens. And our members have been active in helping to shape these text amendments to help ensure that they're beneficial for the community. Durham needs these reforms because Durham's current zoning, it hurts small property owners and small entrepreneurs in multiple ways. Things like setbacks and parking regulations create restrictions that require substantial time and money to get through the process for a variance or rezoning, even for smaller projects. And projects that would otherwise get done by small local owners and developers like myself and like my colleagues therefore get set to the side. The properties sell to larger, better-funded buyers and opportunities for local ownership slowly disappear. And this text amendment helps to resolve many of these issues. Essentially, this is pretty much a small business bill for Durham. In essence, it allows for more affordable housing, more small-scale retail, more locally-owned development, and all of this at a market that currently has national awareness and a lot of competition from large outside developers. These reforms are critical for the folks I work with and for Durham. And given this, we hope that you will support it. Thank you.
And finally, I want to invite Steve Toler up. Steve is part of the applicant team and has done a great job coordinating a lot of the public engagement.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Steve Toler. I'm at 8709 Milhouse Lane in Durham County. I assisted in the community engagement efforts for this. You have before you a report that reflects our efforts, which are outgoing, are ongoing. I've had some experience in community engagement in Durham. I chaired the Durham County, the Durham Chamber of Commerce, the RDU Airport Authority. I've chaired two very successful Durham County-wide bond referendums and provided guidance on the most two recent bond referendums, all highly successful. I chaired the 2011 Education Sales Tax Referendum, another successful effort. The community engagement efforts for this proposal have been as broad and as deep as any that I've ever been involved in. Is it a perfect process? No, certainly not. Any effort undertaken by man is never perfect. Has our effort to have broad community engagement been shown? I think it has. Are our hearts in the right place? Yes, they are. Did we shy away from any individuals or groups that may not agree with our proposal? Absolutely not. In fact, we solicited feedback from individuals and groups who had serious questions and concerns and objections. My teammate, Dave Olverson, who joined me in our engagement efforts, has experienced this and has some reflections on our feedback efforts. And I'll let Dave reflect on those. But I appreciate your consideration of this. It's really serious for Durham. We need affordable housing. We need the ability to, as you all, I think, stated earlier this evening, make things smoother for good projects and good efforts. And this is one of them. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. And yeah, I'll just end by saying we have appreciated the feedback we've gotten. As Steve mentioned, great feedback from the public, from the Planning Subcommittee, Planning Commission Subcommittee, and from staff. And we have, we've incorporated most of those changes, most of the changes suggested by the Subcommittee, as well as, you know, changes from those other sources into this proposal. And we honestly think it makes the proposal better. So it's been, it's been a really great process in that regard. And with that, I will end my time. And we are here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. With that, we will move to our public comment. Getting the sign-up sheet brought over to me now. Okay. I see people also, I see people on the Zoom call that I anticipate are going to want to speak on this. So if you are on Zoom and want to speak, go ahead and start raising your hand there. As far as people who signed up to speak in person, I'm just going to read off the list of names that I have. And then if you will come, step to the podium. And when you come to the podium, please state your name and address. And we have a mixture of folks. So please state whether you are for or against upfront and then make your comments. Everybody will have two minutes to provide comments. So the list I have is Tom Miller, Sherry Rosenfeld, Devin Solo, Brian Vaughn, Cliff Creidel, Topher Thomas, and Mimi Kessler. Grace, do we have the timer ready? Two minutes, yes. Great. Tom, you may begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Members of the Commission. My name is Tom Miller. I live at 1110 Virginia Avenue in Durham. I'm a lifelong Durham resident for 40 years in my professional career as an attorney. I have been involved in real estate and land use regulation 30 of those years as the head of the Real Estate Regulatory Section of the North Carolina Attorney General's Office. I've made a very thorough review of this proposal, and I'm urging you to oppose it. I have attended some of the public engagement meetings because this proposal is 80 pages and so big. None of them actually reached down to any of the details. I have given you tonight a written summary of some of the things that concern me. But to go, there's no way in two minutes that I can reach down to the details that I think that need to be addressed. But I will say this. With regard to affordability, which is in the title, I don't perceive this as being affordable. Certainly, there are a couple of programs that in certain circumstances do advance affordability in a flawed way. But for the most part, these proposals allow developers to build more and bigger. And the best single example I can give you, in the EHC, we created a small housing type, 1,200 square feet. If this passes, those small houses can go up to 2,000 square feet and include a garage. We cannot regulate house prices, but we can regulate house sizes. The virtue of the small house option is is that we create 1,200-square-foot houses. We lower the bottom rung on the wealth creation ladder. This raises that rung higher, excludes more people from building personal and family wealth by making it harder to buy houses. A 2,000-square-foot house with a garage is going to be more unobtainable than a 1,200-square-foot house. So those are my comments. I urge you to look at my document. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Next, we have Sherry Rosenfeld.
Hi there. Sherry Zan Rosenthal, 2205 Wilson Street, Durham. I'm against this proposal. Some of you may know me as, having been Deputy City Attorney, I originated the Affordable Housing Program and the legal structuring for the city of Durham. I was also the developer of Eno Commons Cohousing, a prototypical environmental housing development of 22 homes in North Durham. This Jim Anthony proposal says that it simplifies in order to gain affordable housing. But there's nothing simple about it. And like Tom said, I don't think it's going to generate any affordable housing at all, in actuality. It trades on a sense of desperation about the need for more diverse and affordable housing types. And it follows a playbook that has been set out by the National Industry Associations of amping up this desperation and then saying that the answer is deregulation. In fact, by removing any gateways of approval for housing, we remove the only leverage that, right now, our elected officials do have in gaining affordable housing. This will be as of by right. And once you open up that Pandora's box of allowing all these changes by right, if you do not like the result, putting it back in the box is going to be very difficult because of the vested legal rights that will be involved. This scare tactic is in service of policies that actually result in an undermining of strategic growth in affordable housing. This text amendment will allow subdivision, demolition processes, and destruction of historic setbacks. And we're right in the middle of a comprehensive plan process that is going to substantially change our UDO. Why would we allow this extensive changes to
Sherry, your two minutes are up.
Without any official public process? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Devin Solo. I live at 603 Lion Tree Lane in Durham. I'm a small business owner. And while this text amendment supports affordable housing, I want to highlight that it also supports small businesses. It does not help large funds such as BlackRock or other large out-of-town investors with short-term profits in mind. Rather, it creates more accessibility for people who are here and care about the future of Durham to control Durham's development. Without this amendment, it is simply too difficult in many cases for local companies or individuals to develop and build here. Additionally, the proposed amendment helps small businesses purchase and own their own properties rather than simply being tenants. Supporting this amendment would be support for local jobs and affordable housing development. Thank you.
Hello, Planning Commission. My name is Topher Thomas. I'm a teacher here in Durham. I also run a small equitable housing company called Quorum Houses. And our mission at Quorum is to break cycles of injustice, economic and racial injustice, through creative affordable housing. And this text amendment will enable more creative affordable housing development. All I do is ADUs and small incremental development. And I build small because if you build smaller, you can sell things for cheaper. And if things are cheaper, they become more affordable. That's the definition of affordable. And this text amendment will enable my team to do that and to do that with more ease, to do that with less red tape and less hassle. It'll enable us to create more affordable home ownership opportunities by being able to segment lots in smaller ways. I think it'll do a lot of good. Now, it's not perfect, and nothing is. But clearly, what is, is not working. We know the issues, and we know that they are getting worse. And so this is a step. It is not the only step by any means. We need a host of things, but it's a step in the right direction. And so I hope that you'll consider passing it. Thank you.
Good evening, Members of the Planning Commission. Brian Vaughn, 1024 Starlight Drive, speaking in affirmation of the proposal. I'm a third-year Master of Landscape Architecture and Environmental Planning student at NC State. In this summer, I worked part-time with the applicant creating site plans for the parcels and largely the urban tier of Durham. One of the most memorable parts of this experience was learning how the spatial constraints of Durham's existing setbacks, parking requirements, and lot minimums are applied. At present, many of these requirements provide a significant barrier for Durham-based designers and builders, who you've heard from before, to produce the housing and small-scale commercial space that our residents and entrepreneurs desperately need. This text amendment will significantly reduce these barriers. Commissioners and members of the public, I encourage you to refer to pages 89 to 93 of the Agenda Idips Attachment. As proposed, there are 22 points of alignment with the text amendment and the comprehensive plans, goals, and objectives. I'm going to highlight two of them. Number five, SCAD enables more opportunities for middle-income homeownership by allowing for small homes and building ADUs first. So by adjusting minimum lot requirements and setbacks, Durham-based builders will create more homes and ADUs for thousands who seek to become homeowners and renters here. Number 12, SCAD eliminates parking minimums, a necessary step to creating walkable neighborhoods that aren't dominated by parking lots. So requiring business owners to provide onsite parking spaces in walkable neighborhoods is pretty much the most efficient way to ensure that entrepreneurs won't start these businesses in the first place. The text amendment's elimination of parking minimums allows entrepreneurs to focus on building businesses and not parking lots. To end on a personal note, I've lived in Durham since summer of 2021, lived in North Carolina for seven years. I rent a home with my partner. I want to become a homeowner here in Durham. I'm concerned that without the checks changes that SCAD proposes, the only affordable starter home that we'll be able to afford is in Meben Apex, Fuquay Varina. There are thousands of folks who'd like to live an urban's lifestyle in Durham. Let's align the rules with these desires. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mimi Kessler. I usually talk to you on Zoom, so it's nice to see all of you. I live at 1418 Woodland Drive. If you heard the pitch that this group gives for why they want to do this text amendment, you would totally sign up for it. You would just think it was the best thing ever. The problem is the 100-plus pages of detail. And I don't think it's realistic to get rid of all parking requirements. Maybe we should look at it. Maybe we should reduce it. But getting rid of all parking for either commercial or for residential doesn't make sense to me. There are also reasons for buffers. So we need the buffers. So again, it's something that I feel like that we need to have a longer conversation and a more detailed conversation about these things. I want to support small business. I want those small business owners to be able to own their shop and live above it. You know, that's one of the things that they talk about in the pitch. But I don't know, I don't know how to do that. But I think the Planning Department does. And I think that there are some good things that are in the proposal, but there's some other things that are just too broad and too far-ranging. So I do support the idea of streamlining things, but I have not been able to figure out how this particular proposal is going to help the small businesses and streamline the process. So I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alan Sprite. I apologize, I didn't sign up on the list. I'm a little new to this. Is it okay if I make a couple of comments despite that? Thank you. So I've been, I've lived in the Triangle since 1968 in Durham for almost 20 years. I'm a member of several different communities, including a group of pickup soccer players from all over the world to being a small business owner that has focused on historic preservation and green building for many years. I'm in favor of this amendment for all the reasons that have already been stated. I don't think I need to go in great detail about those. But I think, just to highlight a couple of things, I feel like, you know, there is, there's no proposal is perfect. I think this, on balance, solves more problems than creates. I believe it can be complementary to other efforts that are going on and should continue. I feel like, or I'm confident that the, that this can increase housing stock and also increase the amount of housing stock for a given neighborhood that is, on balance or on average, less than the median house price in a given neighborhood. I also feel like this may, or should lead to kind of higher-density, mixed-use development, which kind of prioritizes people over cars, reduces things like food deserts, increases walkability of communities, and kind of, you know, in general, vibrant, high-density neighborhoods. And then the final thing I'd just say is Durham is a living organism. We, you know, change is the only constant. And with the ability to grow, adapt, we'll continue to become a vibrant, healthy community. And those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Cliff Creidel. I'm with Creidel Engineering. I can be found at 204 East Markham Avenue, Durham, as where we have been for over 100 years serving this community in civil engineering and land surveying. I have, I'm not physically quite that old, but I have spent my entire life doing this. Worked for big developers, small developers, and whoever wanted to do work in this town. And I will tell you, I've worked on several different ordinances, subdivision ordinances, zoning ordinances. I've seen a little of everything in this town over the years. I have never seen the growth in downtown like I've seen over the past 10 years. And I was shocked by it, and now I'm just unbelievably pleased by it. But if you notice, a lot of that growth in downtown Durham, although it was originated by our Durham natives, it's not necessarily all Durham. Hopefully, the people occupying them will be Durham. But a lot of those developers didn't come from here. And this, this text amendment and the housing ordinances we've done over the past few years has really opened the door to a lot of development for the people of Durham that live downtown Durham. It's keeping us from doing urban sprawl, and it's concentrating more development in downtown Durham. And that is phenomenal. It's generated a lot of excitement over the past few years. And I have actually been a part of the development of some of these lots and am very pleased with what I've seen with the people and how it's affected their lives. And so I will say I am definitely a proponent for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I, no one else is currently in the queue at the podium to speak, but we do have several people who have indicated via Zoom they would like to speak. So we're going to start going through our virtual attendees. First up is Donna Steinbeck. Donna, you will have two minutes.
Okay, my name is Donna Steinbeck. I live at 4825 Jimmy Rogers Road, Durham, North Carolina, and I'm a lifelong resident of Durham. I support a quicker and more affordable housing structures and amendments, but I do not believe this is the final answer. I think a lot of the parts of it are in the right direction. But I also support the existing concerns and analysis that the Planning Department has mentioned in their overview for this. I attended public hearings at West Club, and I've been at this Joint City-County Planning Commission when it's been presented. And I have more questions than I have answers for, and this is already a very large document. One of the areas that specifically is of concern is about changing, that require the rental unit's affordability for only five years, while in other zones and with other UDOs, it's talking about affordable housing for 30 years. Why so short a period? If, if we want this to really work, I think some of these codes opens the gate for some bad things to happen because they're so broad and can be misinterpreted. And so I will continue to support, put the Planning Department and their analysis for this. And, and if they're concerned, I'm really concerned. And I probably have some more that they, you know, haven't articulated. So thank you for your time. And I hope this does develop into a better plan.
Thank you.
Sorry, hit the wrong unmute button. Thank you, Donna. Next, we'll move to Bonita Green.
Good evening, Chair. I'm Amendolia and fellow sitting Commissioners. My name is Bonita Green. I reside at 831 Center Street, Durham, North Carolina, in the Merritt Moore Community. I am the President of the Merritt Moore Community Development Corporation and the Inner Neighborhood Council of Durham. For the purposes of this meeting, I'm speaking as a private citizen. For reasons that you have previously heard, I stand in opposition to the proposed text amendment changes to the UDO. Gentrification is intentional, not necessary. It is poor people being pushed out by development and progress. Justice has a geography and equitable distribution of Justice has a geography, and equitable distribution of resources and services is a human right. So why is it that we treat cultural erasure as inevitable? I am calling on the entirety of Durham's planning community, elected officials, and policymakers to make the commitment to build people's capacity to stay in their homes, stay in their communities, and stay where they feel whole. This proposal is not about small builders, small-scale retail, or affordable housing. It is about a group of developers who are seeking a tool that will allow them to increase their wealth, which will be to the detriment of Durham's lower-wealth community. This proposal simply isn't ready, and I ask that you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonita. Up next, we have Brian Callaway.
All right, thank you, Commission. My name is Brian Callaway of 307 Gresham Avenue here in Durham. And I am opposed to this text amendment. I wanted to point out that this is basically the same group that brought us the expanding housing choices a couple of years ago. I am very grateful to see that some of the supporters of the EHC that identified themselves as simply community members and spoke on that are now seemingly full-fledged, paid, presumably staff of the applicant pool. So I do appreciate that transparency this time around. But the planning commission correctly identified that the EHC would bring us accelerated gentrification. We've seen exactly that and displacement over the last few years. So I'm very concerned about where this text amendment may lead us. I also wanted to let you know that I did attend the August 30th public session that was held on the West Club in Walltown. Definitely felt like a token outreach event. We were told that this is a living document that, oh, we'll be meeting again, we'll be discussing this. And then two weeks later, they brought this text asking you to move it forward to council. So I appreciated the continuation that you gave this. But I did want to applaud our planning department because they identified a lot of nasty bathwater that's mixed in with these 75 pages of proposed text amendments. And I really don't care how many adorable baby benefits can come along with, with these problematic changes. I say throw it all out. Let, let the city do an actual public participation process to rewrite our UDO. So please don't let the fox guard the hen house. Regulatees should not be writing the regulations themselves, especially not in Durham. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Randall Lanau.
Good evening. I'm Randall Lanu. Business is at 502 Riggsby Avenue. I'm speaking in favor. We have a small design-build business in Durham for coming up now on about 23 years. And while I fully support all the common sense provisions in this, and then I'm just going to tell a quick story that supports the SCAD provision about stormwater management requirements for small businesses. The story's set in Creedmoor, not Durham, but the rules and context are almost exactly the same. Excuse me. My wife is a small-town veterinarian, and we built an animal hospital for her in Creedmoor. Our original plan was to buy a piece of land and build a new building. We did identify that parcel and made a deal to purchase. In due diligence, I solicited a proposal for the required stormwater management system. This was about eight years ago, and the total was $350,000. And there's no way that a small business could support that cost. I looked for and found an existing building that we ultimately purchased and renovated, and the stormwater management was grandfathered in. We're very happy with this final result for her business. For the town, though, the result was not great. Dollar General bought the property, that property, and built a store that is literally now the gateway to the town. Dollar General is an out-of-state corporation with deep pockets that could afford to pay for stormwater management. The building and parking are mashed onto the site, and the building features faux windows that open onto a concrete block wall. I'm not making this up. I drive by this building every day. That is an unintended consequence of stormwater management requirements that squashes small businesses and limits smart and local new development. SCAD can eliminate this unintended consequence and support small, local businesses.
Randall, your two minutes are over.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Up next, we have Dan Bach.
Hi, my name is Dan Bach. I live at 205 Albemarle Street in Durham. I'm a software engineer. I'm not involved in housing development professionally, so I'm just an interested resident. I'm speaking in favor of this item. I, in particular, like to highlight the removal of parking mandates. We currently have parking minimums that make developers build more parking spots than they want. It imposes car dependency on the residents of new housing units, whether they want it or not, and makes housing more expensive to build. And of course, those costs get passed on to the renters or buyers of that housing. So it's bad for a lot of reasons, and this is our chance to get rid of it. All the other parts of this package are also quite sensible. It makes sense in a housing shortage to talk to the people who build housing and ask them why they're not building more. In this case, they're giving us a detailed list of changes that would help them build more housing. I think they're all positive changes, and I hope you agree. I also think it's a good idea to do this in advance of the UDO process because the effects of changes like these are not predictable in advance. We don't know which of these provisions will be used more and which will be used less, just as we didn't know that for expanding housing choices. And we didn't know before Durham's Affordable Housing Density Bonus was created how often that would be used. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Bob Chapman.
Hello, my name is Bob Chapman, and I live at 2525 Lanier Place in Durham. When I moved to Durham in 1965, our zoning ordinance was 16 pages long. It's grown and grown and grown. Sherry's a good friend. Tom's a friend. The lawyering has yielded about 2,000 pages when you count up all of the comp plan, reference guides, design standards, the manuals, and the UDO. More words than are in War and Peace or the King James Bible. It's obvious that this text amendment is lengthy, but it's 1/20th as long as what it's trying to amend for a positive result. When we did Trinity Heights for Duke, we had one goal, which was to build workforce housing for Duke employees that would be affordable. And it looked like the best way to do it would be to make something that looked like it was already there, that was compatible with the neighborhood, and we ran into a total brick wall. We had to do self-fired text amendments. I filed them, 12 separate text amendments, and that still didn't work. And finally, Steve Medlin, the former planning director, had to declare that we were a suburban cluster subdivision and count the streets surrounding the two city blocks that we were redeveloping behind East Campus as buffer in order to let us simply put there the same type of house, the same lot sizes, the alleys, the setbacks, as had been there for a long, long, long time. And I think this text amendment is a very important step toward making it possible for Durham to get back to the good days.
Bob, your two minutes are over.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mary Molina. Mary, are you able to unmute yourself?
Okay, can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. My name is Mary Molina, and I live at 1410 Watts Street in Durham. I appreciate the people who spoke before me in opposition to this proposal, and I hope that you'll particularly pay attention to Bonita Green's statements. I'd like to go on record with my concern that we allow privately-initiated text amendments and changes to our UDO to be sponsored by individuals who have commercial interests, when we have many people whose expertise is in the city planning who also reside in Durham. Jim Anthony is not simply a private individual looking to improve the prospects and opportunities he may desire for himself and his little plot of land somewhere. He is a commercial real estate developer whose proposed changes will open the floodgates to others who share his same agenda of building beyond our capacity to manage. And in his own shocking words at a recent meeting, he would like to gentrify the crime out of Durham. Perhaps Mr. Anthony partnered with Habitat to make his attempt to change public planning policy less offensive and to make it more palatable. But in what might be perceived as a payoff of land and money to Habitat, to use their good name, that doesn't really make this partnership palatable. It suggests a questionable intent in my book. I urge the commission to say no to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Eric Mixturtino.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, wonderful. Yes, I'm Eric Mike Starino. I live on 117 South Driver Street in Durham. Been a resident of Durham for over five years. I'm a researcher at a human rights nonprofit by trade, so I've come here just as a concerned resident. I am a proponent of the changes to this plan. Specifically, if I understand them correctly, some of the provision changes to ADUs be increasing from 800 to 1,200 square feet. I personally want to build an ADU in my backyard in order to provide an additional unit of affordable housing. Being able to get to 1,200 square feet allowed me to have a, you know, a two-bedroom, three-bedroom house that could actually have a family instead of just, you know, a small family or, you know, a couple or a single person. And also, even more so, the compact neighborhood tier amendments. You know, where are the most places that make Durham Durham? Or when you go to any city that's beautiful, it's the old pre-war buildings that have those mixed use that have lots of small landlords or people, businesses that own their businesses and people who live on top. Taking away the parking minimums, taking away the setback minimums can really create a much more dynamic Durham. And I just, and you know, this is not a be-all, end-all. There's still a lot of work to do. And we actually have all hands on deck in order to create a more affordable, more beautiful, more vibrant Durham. But lots of changes within this amendment are a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jim Anthony.
There we go. Well, thank you for guiding us through a process that frankly has been far more rewarding from my perspective than the last text amendment group I did a few years ago. Yes, this is more complex, but for those who are concerned about 80 pages, when the next round happens, it's going to get really interesting. And it's probably two to three years away before any of that happens. Can Durham afford to wait that long to remove some of the obstacles that we're attempting to address? I, I want to say thank you, as many have said earlier, from the staff to the planning commission. You all are highest-paid folks in the Triangle for the work that you do. And it's, it's an honor to be a part of this team that's advancing something that we really believe can make a positive difference in Durham. As you just heard from Eric, the, Tom was not correct when he said that we were increasing the size of ADUs to 2,000 square feet. It's actually 1,200 square feet cap versus the 800. But I'll refrain from trying to defend myself on the other issues and really appreciate the support.
Thank you. I see David Berger has raised their hand. And if there's anyone else who wants to speak on this, please line up at the podium or raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. David, you have two minutes.
Thank you so much. Yeah, so hi, I live at 116 North Buchanan Boulevard in Durham. Durham resident. I also am not a developer at all, but I do teach about housing for a living. I also attended an outreach event in November on West Club that was very informative. I strongly support the text amendments. You know, we need housing of all types, and we need more commercial infill, we need more density, and the removal of parking minimums just to be more environmentally friendly and to allow this. Part of the reason for the lack of affordability is that we're not using our land efficiently enough. The CD, UDO, might not be perfect, but it's definitely an improvement, and it helps in many dimensions. I urge you all to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none. Turn it over to Commissioner Comments and Questions. Actually, sorry, apologies first. So we established a committee comprised of three members, Vice Chair Cameron, who was the chair of the committee, and Commissioner Zuri Williams, and Commissioner Sease, who reviewed these changes in details and have provided a report for us tonight. We will, so to be clear about the process, we will vote both on the specific text amendment changes before us, and we will also vote on whether or not we endorse the committee report. So there will be two votes on this item momentarily. But with that, I want to turn it over to Vice Chair Cameron to provide an overview of the committee's report.
Good evening, everyone. The SCAD Review Committee met twice. First on October 19th in person, and again on December 1st via Zoom. And at the first meeting and the second meeting, the first meeting in particular, we made recommended changes. Some of those changes weren't made. When we met again, we have stood by those changes. In particular, we are in agreement with all of the staff recommended changes that are part of the agenda and the attachments tonight. Overall, there are numerous positive improvements to the ordinance that will enable development of more housing and more affordable housing in the city of Durham. Yet, several proposed changes are still problematic. I'll note those as follows. Section 6.6.4. A. 2. The committee does not support removing the requirements for affordable units to be evenly distributed and distinguishable from market rate units, nor the removal of the compliance mechanism under the Affordable Housing Bonus. The committee, again, requests that affordable housing have a time to run with the land. In other words, the restrictions or covenants that restrict the use to affordable housing for a minimum of 30 years. The addition of residential units within industrial and industrial light districts has a very storied history of racial segregation. Black citizens were regulated to areas that were zoned industrial that allowed for overcrowding, poorly constructed housing, non-existent or inadequate city services, prostitution taverns, and most importantly, polluting of air and water, which still have health implications to this day with the black community. The committee does not support this portion of the proposed text amendment. The committee, again, requests the name to be changed from detached town home to city home or another name for this housing type for multiple reasons, including avoiding conflict with the Building Code and other references throughout the ordinance. Proposed language referencing building separation for town homes should also be removed to avoid conflating Building Code requirements with zoning requirements. And that concludes the report.
Thank you. There are other Commissioner comments or questions that anybody would like to? There are other commissioner comments or questions that anybody would like to make? Okay, so I will speak a little bit for myself, and I've had months to talk, to think about what I was going to say in this moment, and I still have no clue, because there's just so much to say. I think I'm a person that tries to hold a lot of nuance, and so I will try to do that as best I can in this moment. To my core, the, I, one of the, one of the primary framing, pieces of framing that impacts how I think about development and planning is the fact that real estate development does define how our cities look, and that is just a fact of reality. That is the world we live in, in a capitalist society, and planning is the way that we are able to put guardrails around that to make sure that our cities look the way we want them to look. And so I want to acknowledge that we often are working within systems that are broken, that we wish we didn't have to work within, and I think for me, this is one of them. From just a pure process standpoint, while I truly believe and recognize that developers need to be consulted, when we are making changes to the U D O, I do take issue with them writing the code themselves, and I believe that's why we have local government staff. That said, this is the process we have. And so I have spent most of my energy focused on what do we do within that context? I know I can't change the entire structure right now, but I think I've tried to focus on what about this text amendment can we change and make better? And I think the committee report does a great job of that and speaks for itself. And my goal in this process is to not simply be saying no to a set of changes, but to be saying, we can get there, or yes, but, because there are items in here that I agree with the committee's report that need to just simply be changed. They're like the, the mirror sight of residential uses and industrial zoning, just on its face, I can't get past that. And I appreciate the committee for calling that out and being specific as to why. So I really hope as this moves forward in the process, that the care and the time that this commission, the committee, and planning staff has taken is really attended to, because I think, as one of the speakers noted, staff did a really detailed job pointing out what needs to change, and the committee did a really intentional job pointing out what needs to change. And I don't believe this is a case of like staff and the committee just being like, oh, no, we don't want affordable development, we don't want more housing. It's the expertise speaking to, there are certain ways to do that and certain ways to get there. So I think with that, I will wrap up my thoughts and just reiterate, I don't, like, my intent tonight is to not say no, but is to say yes, but. Does anybody have any further comments? Yes, Commissioner Cutright.
Appreciate it, Chair. And I'll be brief here. I think one thing that's important that's been pointed out is that these, these text amendments were discussed and talked about with staff, and so as we say or we hear that, you know, the, that developers or private citizens are writing the code, I think that we should be clear that it is in coordination and communication with, with staff. And everyone in this room has the opportunity to present text amendments and make modifications and can do that as a private citizen. And so, you know, I would, I would implore you to do that if you have suggested changes. And I think finally, you, this, the U D O isn't perfect as it is, it won't be perfect, you know, if these are approved, but I think it pushes us, pushes Durham in the right direction toward more efficient land use, and I'll leave my comments there.
Commissioner Carmen Williams.
I think that work is being done to try to move Durham in a positive direction. I read the North Carolina Building Code, I read the ICC, so I read it and I understand it. My concern is that most people do not. So the opportunity to simplify something that makes it easier for residents to understand is one thing, but creating something that is going to make it easier to determine setbacks and eliminate parking restrictions or minimums, I think it pushes things a little too far, a little too fast, and that's only because we haven't fixed the issues that people who still reside in Durham need to solve, and that's how we're going to get around without having a car. And until we fix that, we can't just eliminate parking, because that's not going to help. Outside of that, I do take issue with the need to create such an extensive text commitment in order to build more housing on lots where this literally just took place without these commitments on the corner of Club Boulevard and I believe it's Gregson Street, where they demolished one house and built five. So it's possible. It'll take creativity, it'll take gumption, it'll take resources, but it's possible. They just built four homes on Fayetteville Street where there was nothing there. Two of them are extremely large, two of them have A D Us behind them, almost the size of the house, without the current request for text commitments or the need to adjust it by 80 pages. So it's currently happening. I think that we're trying to adjust a system that is trying to play catch-up from large developers who have done more harm than good within this city, but I don't think that this is the way that we go about doing it. I think that creatively, we can come together and we can find a median that works, because what you're seeking to do is being done without the extensive changes that are being proposed. And unfortunately, the proponents for this have been more small business, and the opposition to this have been true residents of Durham. So I weigh the city of Durham and its residents against the aggressive nature by which we may be going about trying to make sure that we have equitability in Durham. And if the issue is the fact that the existing code is over 2,000 pages, then I don't know that adding 80 more is going to eliminate the 2,000. So I think that we should be intentional in how we go forward, and I think that the work that was done by the planning department, as well as my fellow commissioners, in how we are addressing the very real possibilities of what we can create going forward should be taken into consideration. And in doing that, we create an equitable standard in which everybody can thrive in the city of Durham, both developers and residents.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Sees.
Thank you. I appreciate putting the position, putting the chair in the position of finally having to speak first for once. We were all too afraid to speak on a, on such a complex issue. I was part of the subcommittee, working with Vice Chair Cameron and Commissioner Williams, and just wanted to add a few comments to the conversation reflecting on, reflecting on what we heard tonight. There are a lot of statements and comments and concerns, some accurate, some not. That's the nature of public dialogue and public debate. But I think that I, you know, appreciate what I've heard from my fellow commissioners, which has really been focused both on process and the facts. And I think we also heard from a number of residents, both folks here and folks on the Zoom call, who are very much in favor of what's here. What I can tell you is, yes, this is a lot of information, many pages of work, but the suggestion that the committee in some way hasn't gone through it in extreme detail, or the suggestion that staff hasn't gone through it in extreme detail is just wrong. It's been considered in great detail, and I think that's important to acknowledge. And I'm sure some of my commissioners who weren't, fellow commissioners who weren't on the committee have gone through it in great detail. We certainly had a lot of information to look at and have had the opportunity to look at it for several months. We had a couple of summary comments. One was emailed to us by Philip Azar, an email sent earlier today. I would encourage my fellow commissioners to look at that if you haven't. I thought it hit on a number of very key points. And then the comments by David Berger captured very quickly kind of the economic context in which all of us live, and the need to, to make change to, in order to shape change. I think there are a tremendous number of benefits to this proposal. Environmental benefits, building more compactly, opening up more housing opportunities, opening up more commercial, repurposing of existing sites that are more neighborhood scale. And there's nothing that this commission or council could do that would be more environmentally positive in terms of land use benefits than eliminating the minimum requirements for parking. And so I really appreciate the effort that, that everyone who's involved with this has put forth, but I just wanted to kind of highlight a few of, a few of those perspectives. And, and say also that, you know, we, as the committee, identified four very specific concerns, and I'm comfortable supporting what's before us and putting that forth for council to deal with. But as far as the staff report, there's a lot of nuance there. They listed 11, I think, changes that staff supported. They submitted, identified some, some things that were problematic, some things that the applicant did change, and, and a lot, some of that is technical. So it's not a long, long list of things that are problematic. So I also wanted just to highlight that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Zuri Williams.
Good evening. I, one, appreciate all the work that has gone into these text amendments. I think that it is quite a large document, and, you know, some people mentioned developers maybe not being people who, who initiate these amendments. However, I think that there is benefit in having people who are on the ground and seeing this in real time and seeing how it applies to different lots in different situations is helpful. I also think that the planning staff, you know, being as kind of a sounding board is also very helpful. There are some things that I don't necessarily agree with, but I do think we are moving in a right direction to increase density, which will also, you know, hopefully bring down some of the cost of just, you know, people buying, you know, from a supply and demand perspective. So I, I don't think it's perfect, but I think we're, we're making a step in the right direction.
Commissioner Baker.
So I, I opposed these right off the bat. As soon as, as soon as they, the applicant, the application went in, I was against it. And, and the reason is because industries shouldn't be regulating themselves, and they shouldn't be writing the regulations for themselves. They should have input, their key stakeholders, into the process, and they should have strong input into a process that is led and shepherded by the public sector, by, by the planning department, and potentially with, with assistance from expertise from, from other places. And that is a, that is an equitable process, and that is how we create regulations that benefit, that benefit everyone. I do want to touch on, on one point that I, I think that I certainly agree with in terms of what the applicants are saying, which is that our zoning regulations are broken. They are extremely broken. They result in an exclusionary built pattern that perpetuates reliance on cars, something we talk about all the time, setbacks, parking requirements, everything. Of course, lots of parking is built in excess of the minimum parking requirements, which is why, you know, in my day, in my day job, I write zoning regulations, and I include parking maximums, because so many developers build as much parking, many developers build as much parking as they possibly can. Our zoning regulations also not only require, but allow just vast swathes of corporate-built single-family sprawl, something that we see almost every single meeting. We've seen up to 500 acres of single-family sprawl in a single meeting before. So this is, this is really how our city is, is getting shaped. And there were actually a few, a few proposals that spoke to that in, in this, in this, in the SCAD. There was one addressing the requirement that, that was added, I think, late in the game to include commercial and civic uses in, in new residential developments, which I actually thought was a good thing. We also see in parts of our city where there's already existing development, sort of a financial incentive to tear down single-family, smaller, older, single-family units and replace them and the people living in them with larger housing units, not more housing units, larger housing units. And this proposal allows more of that, it perpetuates that. So without actually achieving additional density in a lot of cases, sort of by adjusting tweaks here and there to dimensional standards and allowing that and incentivizing that financially and economically. So we have a lot of new members on this, on this planning commission, we turn over a lot. I've been here for four years, they've got like two or three other people who've been here that amount of time, and a few others who've been here a few years. So we have spent a lot of time talking over those years about how broken our regulations are. So this is not us, this is not me believing that we need to protect the system that we have, because the system that we have is completely indefensible. I think everyone in this room would agree with that. And we've, we've spent time identifying real problems and proposing real solutions. We even had our own committee to develop our own set of zoning regulations, and we passed something two years ago, which we still haven't seen, still has not come, come back to us, and it was one half of a page. So that kind of speaks again to, to the process, who gets to benefit? Who gets the power? You know, anyone can, can, can propose a text amendment, if you have the 3,000 or so dollars it takes to propose that, that text amendment. And who, who has that, who has those resources and to hire a staff member, a D C R P grad to be, to be the project manager of, to shepherd through that process? So we need to think about who has power, how do, how do we make changes? Who shapes our city? Is it, is it a city for, for people, for, for the working class, or is it people for, for capital? The proposed content itself is a pretty expansive list, everyone's been talking about it. Some of it is good, some of it is bad, some of it is good in concept, but executed in ways that I personally disagree with, from my experience writing zoning regulations for communities. And I'm not actually going to walk through all of the different items, because there are, there are so many. But I think philosophically, I would say good regulations are good, bad regulations are bad, and the absence of good regulations where they should be is also bad. But if a, if a profit-motivated industry is going to be writing their own regulations, they're going to have a different lens, and that lens is going to be that good regulations are oftentimes bad, bad regulations are bad, and the absence of good regulations is not necessarily bad. And so that is the lens that, that has been approached for, for this process. To be clear, once again, the real estate industry should be a very important participant in the amendment process, should have say on the rules that, that shape the, the regulations that, that govern real estate. I often, Tom, I have a lot of real estate friends, and I talk with them, and every once in a while, I'm like, wow, that is crazy that we are demanding that, or that those dimensions are that way. We need to make tweaks, we need to be responsive to the real estate industry. But again, who is going to be responsible for shepherding that process? How do we do this in an equitable manner? With urgency, recognizing that we should be making some of these changes before fully rewriting the U D O, which is about a two-year process. which is about a two-year process? So finally, I want to just say that I think we need to take a look at the text amendment process in sort of an action-oriented way and think about whether we want to eliminate it or adjust it to make it more equitable. But I also think that we need to talk more about systems, the systems of planning and development in Durham because the systems are not working. The systems are not working for the real estate industry and they're not working for outcomes. And we face a lot of lose-lose situations where we simply could have win-win situations. And, and I think that we need to address that head-on and proactively. And it's going to take resources, we have a city council member in the room. It's going to take resources from city council members. We're going to need staff dedicated to, to these projects. We're going to need to bring in some experts who, who can work on these things. So I was a no right as soon as this was submitted. I took a step back and reviewed the amendments, the proposed amendments. I'm still a no because we don't need to, this is not a real estate deal. These are our regulations. These are the rules that, that shape urban form. So we don't, we don't need to make a deal. You know, we don't need to make a deal with something that's, that's imperfect. We need to make something that is as good as possible. We have that power. And that's it for my comments.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Okay, I'm ready for a motion. So first, I would like a motion on the text amendment changes.
Question? Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are you going to have a vote on the committee report before or after?
After.
After?
After. Yes, I'm waiting for a motion.
I guess I'll make one.
No one wants to.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we take text, text TC 22, quadruple zero one, text amendment to be forwarded to the city council and county commission with favorable recommendation.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Baker. Are there any, is there any discussion on the motion?
I just have a question. We're, we're voting on the one that's redlined.
We are voting on
Steph.
the text amendment changes that were provided in the staff report.
Okay.
And that's correct. That is the red in, the red-in-line version.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Okay, maybe have the roll call vote.
Chair Amendoyah.
No.
Vice Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Y'all have to bear with me because I had to split this voting sheet in half so that I could take all these votes. Commissioner Baker.
I'm sorry.
I, Chair Cameron said yes. I mean, Vice Chair Cameron, Vice Chair Cameron said yes. So Commissioner Baker, you're next.
No.
No, was that no? I'm sorry, no.
Right, no.
Okay, sorry. And Commissioner Shigares?
No.
Commissioner Cutright?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrod?
Yes.
Commissioner McIver?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
No.
Commissioner Sees?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentine?
No.
Commissioner Carmen Williams?
No.
Commissioner Zuri Williams?
Yes.
It looks like it's a tie, 6-6, which means the motion fails.
Thank you.
Anyone disagree with my math, please tell me now. Thank you.
Okay, now accept a motion on the committee report. And this is, this will be a motion to endorse the committee report.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Valentine against his emotion to endorse the committee report. Is there any further discussion? Seeing.
This will go to the city council.
Yes, this will be included in the report to the city council and the board of county commissioners. Ready for the roll call vote?
Chair Amendoyah.
Yes.
Vice Chair Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Shigares?
Yes.
Commissioner Cutright?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrod?
Yes.
Commissioner McIver?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sees?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentine?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmen Williams?
Yes.
And Commissioner Zuri Williams?
Yes.